We have two minutes before our council meeting starts. If you would like to speak, please sign up now. I am now calling the three o'clock council meeting workshop, council meeting to order. Let the record show that all council members are present except Councilmember Cobb. We will have our invocation by Mr. Don Smith followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Let's bow our heads, please. Dear Lord, thank you for all you do for us. As Thanksgiving approaches, we are reminded of the hardships of their early settlers that they had to endure. They were giving thanks for being allowed to survive in the new world. Lord, we don't face the same physical hardships, but we have many problems and concerns. Lord, over this Thanksgiving, let's turn our problems over to you and continue to live a life that follows your guidance. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Mr. Smith, thank you. Before we approve the agenda, Mr. Cagle, would you like to speak, sir?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and council, yesterday it was brought to our attention that we have a notice error in all of our public hearings tonight. We noticed them appropriately for tonight, time and place and issues, but as we were giving notice for December 3 public hearings, tonight's public hearings were included. So the public hearings for tonight were advertised for tonight and for the December 3 meeting. So therefore, if someone only sees the December 3 and you act tonight, they didn't receive proper notice of an opportunity to speak. So there's no good answer here, but the best answer, and I want to say this is entirely staff's fault. It had nothing to do with the newspaper. They published what we sent them. It had nothing to do with council. It was a staff error. And the most prudent thing to do, I believe, is to delay the public hearings, all public hearings scheduled for tonight to December 3, and address those items at that time. And the city attorney is prepared. If you have questions, or I'll do the best I can to answer.
But, Mr. Cagle, the residents still can speak on those items even though we're not going to make an action on that item?
On December 3 or tonight?
Tonight.
Tonight, they could speak at Citizens Public Forum. The suggestion is to take all four of those public hearings and delay them until December 3.
So Mayor Protem. That's your question? Oh, I'm sorry. So her question is, I guess, is similar to what I just asked you. On Citizen Comments, they can speak. And some citizens have put in for the public hearing. Can they speak on those items if the council choose to table the four public hearing items? City Attorney.
Counsel can choose to have two public hearings, one tonight and one December 3, but the issue is there is a notice error. And so we will need to have, the recommendation is that you'll need to have one on December 3 and not take action tonight. So if you decide not to take action tonight, not to hold the public hearings, and they wouldn't be speaking on the public hearing items, they would be able to speak at Citizen Comments. Having said that, if you, I mean, you could choose to have two public hearings.
Okay, so what I'm understanding you to say, not only for this council, but also for the residents and the individuals at home, the council have a choice to table public hearing because there was an error in the newspaper. When we do our approve the agenda, we can table it. But my question was, the Citizen Comments, these residents that came here, they under the impression, because some of them are new faces I have never seen before, so they under the impression when they signed up for Citizen Comments and public hearing, they're going to talk about the agenda items. But because we had an error in the paper, and we still got to have that public hearing on December 3, the recommendation is to table, we'll make an action item to vote on it till December 3, because we still got to have it regardless of what, how we vote tonight. So the council also have a choice to let the public speak on, have two public hearings. They can speak tonight on those four items, even if they table it, and also on December 3. Is that what I understood you to say?
Yes, basically. And let me just summarize again. So you can approve the agenda, removing those public hearing items, which means you wouldn't actually hold the public hearings tonight and you wouldn't take action tonight, or you could hold the public hearing and not take action tonight, knowing that you'll have to have another public hearing on each of those items on December 3.
Yes, ma'am.
Simply, the question, though, is can they speak on Citizens Comments regarding this issue? Should we choose to table it for December 3, the public hearing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Cagle, do you have anything else?
No, ma'am. Sorry, no, ma'am.
With that being said, council, do you have any questions before I called for approval of the agenda, before we decide on this vote? And let the record show that Councilwoman Cobb is here. Any questions for the city attorney or Mr. Cagle? So I just want to go over this one more time. You have the option to approve the agenda with the exception to the public hearing, the four items, and there would not be any speaking tonight for the public hearing, or you could allow the residents, even though you tabled those four items on the public hearing, to speak. With that being said, Councilmember Segarra.
I don't know if, Mayor, if we have to do this motion during, when we approve the agenda, or can we do it now?
It has to be now. I haven't called for it, but I'm getting ready to call to approve the agenda. Okay, approve. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved with, do I do those changes now?
Yes, sir.
So I move that we approve the agenda. And for those that are here, allowing the citizens, which they have the right to speak on public hearing during Citizens Comment, but then move the public hearing to our next meeting.
So what I'm understanding you, before I give a second for clarification, for the records, for our Madam Secretary and also City Attorney, you make a motion to table the four public hearing items, but also allow the residents that's here to speak on them, but there will be no action taken?
During Citizens Comment, since we're not going to have a public hearing.
Okay, that's different. So what you're basically saying, they can talk about the item during the Citizen Comments, but not doing, we're not going to have a public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, Mayor Protem, second the motion. So let me clarify this for the record. It's all in favor, and let me clarify this for you, Madam City Attorney, that Councilmember Segarra made a motion to table all the four items upon the public hearing and not have it open to the public to speak it during the public hearing, but they can speak on those items during Citizen Comments. That was seconded by Mayor Protem. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries six to one with Councilmember Adams in opposition. So the resident can understand what just happened. There will not be a public hearing tonight, but during Citizen Comments, you will be able to allow to talk on those public hearing four items. And I truly apologize, but it was an error that was made, that was just brought to the attention, the council did not know, just been brought to the attention, to the council. I think Mr. Cagle did a great job in explaining it, and also Madam City Attorney. Thank you. This item will be coming back. You can speak also December 3 during Citizen Comments and also during public hearing on this item. There will be no actions taken on that item tonight. We will now have our Star Award. Madam Secretary, Ms. Adams, follow me.
PR 24028, Colleen Starr Award.
Thank you all for comment once again. There's not many times I get the opportunity to really celebrate the greatness of this city. And when I do have that opportunity, when it comes to a resident, I really like to highlight that. Voluntarism is the backbone to any city, to make a city even great. It's a positive attribute that an individual or an organization have taken the time to volunteer their time, their talents, to help in our community, to enhance the quality of life of our residents. And that's something that we all can contribute. It doesn't cost anything, it's free. So Councilmember Adams, he will be calling up two individuals that have gone beyond to give back to the city of Colleen, to make us an even greater place so we all can have a better quality of life. Councilmember Adams.
Dr. Martin Luther King said, "Everyone can be great because everyone can serve." And the two people I'm calling up tonight has been a service to our community, and that's James and Christian McWilliams. Their united service to this community has been a key to a strong marriage and partnership. When they moved to Colleen in 2018 to support their family and soon begin volunteering. During the COVID-19 pandemic, they recognized the growing needs of the city and co-founded Colleen Creators, a grassroots organization aimed at fostering food security, trauma recovery, and addiction support. With a focus on peer support, creative arts, and civic engagements, Colleen Creators has flourished under the couple's leadership, growing from a single community garden to a multifaceted agency with four community gardens, a recovery and wellness studio, therapeutic arts classes, and mutual aid programs. And needless to say, they're located downtown. Thanks. Y'all got to share this.
One more for Ms. Jack. All right. I can say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. I stand before you today filled with gratitude, humility, and hope. As a founder of Colleen Creators, I am truly honored to accept this award on behalf of everyone who has contributed to our mission of fostering food security and recovery from trauma and addiction through the collective power of community. This journey began four and a half years ago with a simple yet profound vision to create spaces where people come together and grow not just food, but in resilience, and heal through the transformative powers of nature, art, and peer support. And that we have. I first want to express my deepest gratitude to my family, my partner James, and his dear mother, who have supported us throughout this in all ways. And if you know James, you know he's the backbone of the agency. Some people call me the mouth, but he's the backbone. And that's why I'm speaking, and he's standing right now. We next want to extend our heartfelt appreciation to our founding board members, especially Kelly Flating and Brian Flating, Ken Wilkerson, Louis Minor, Clayton Tucker, and Aya Anelli, probably common names to many of you. They do so much for our community. Each brought unique strengths to Colleen Creators. We would particularly like to dedicate this moment to Kelly Flating, our visionary founder, veteran, farmer, artist, community advocate, and best friend. Kelly's passion for service and her unwavering commitment to this community guided our way in those early days and continue to inspire us. Though she passed away just one year after our founding, her spirit remains with us, guiding our work every day, and we have no doubt it, she is who guides our success. This success we've achieved is not ours alone. It is a very collective effort fueled by the dedication of almost 500 different unique volunteers, sustaining members, AmeriCorps service members, who have helped our agency grow. Each of you has played an integral role in our story, reminding us that together we can overcome what seem to be insurmountable challenges. At the heart of our mission and our name is a core belief that we're all creators. Our first goal with every person we meet, whether they're unhoused or the mayor, is to build trust and a relationship. Our second goal is to spark the creator inside, because creating is our power. It leads to self-sufficiency, sparks new ideas, and nurtures local solutions. I want to stress the critical importance of including individuals with lived experience and recovery in developing sustained solutions to the challenges we face today of food insecurity and housing shortages. Our insights and experiences are invaluable in creating the kinds of programs that will truly meet our needs. Tonight, I am especially excited to celebrate our newest chapter with the city of Colleen, and that has been our partnership to initiate community art projects that both celebrate our artists and our artists' ability to help us in revitalizing our community. You may have seen some murals or one of the hearts of Colleen Sculpture Series. These projects honor the contributions of local artists recognizing their vital roles to foster economic development by creating vibrant places to live. By infusing our shared spaces with creativity and culture, we celebrate the power of art and humanity to transform not just walls, but lives. Finally, to every individual who has walked through our gardens, shared your stories, taken brave steps in recovery, this is your honor. Every blossom in our garden symbolizes your resilience and strength, and you inspire us daily. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, I'd like to thank Councilmember Adams. And as we salute our volunteers, all our council, they come up with a volunteer that's in our community that has gone beyond to make our city a better place, and thank the communication team for working with council to make that happen. Now, council, we will go into the work session. You have three minutes to speak, three times each. The discussion, agenda items are 2 to 13 for November 19. Let me make sure I don't have those out, let me make sure I take those off. With the exception of the public hearing, I call myself Madam City Attorney. So 11, 12, 13 will not be discussed tonight.
As well as 10, correct?
It's 10 also. Oh, yes, ma'am, it's under there. So let me clarify there. It's PH 24 dash 047, PH dash 24 dash 048, PH dash 24 dash 049, and PH dash 24 dash 050 will not be discussed, nor will there be a public hearing on those items. Madam Secretary.
RS 24207, consider a memorandum resolution casting votes to elect directors for the Tax Appraisal District of Bell County for 2025.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Madam City Attorney.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As a refresher, I'm going to, you've heard this a couple times, so I'm going to go through it again. In 2023, the tax, property tax code replaced the previous process for appointing board of directors for the Tax Appraisal District of Bell County as well as other counties. Previously, the city appointed one member to the Tax Appraisal Board. On January 1, 2025, the board will be made up of the elected tax assessor collector, three members elected by voters, and five members appointed by the taxing entity election process. All taxing entities nominated up to five candidates, the city of Colleen nominated Kenny Wells. Each entity now has a certain number of votes based on the percentage of the total tax levy to put towards whichever candidate or candidates they choose, and the city of Colleen has 552 of the 5,000 total votes. The five candidates that receive the most votes will be members of the Board of Directors for 2025, and because the city has over 5%, we need to approve the resolution tonight. The candidates on the ballot, these are the candidates on the ballot, John Banks, James Lynn, Bill Berry, Joe Burnett, Jared Bryan, Sam Fulcher, Susan Jones, Marvin Rainwater, Todd Scott, and Kenny Wells. Again, Kenny Wells is the candidate that the city of Colleen put forward in the nomination process. And the recommendation is that the staff recommends city council approve a resolution to cast a ballot allocating its 552 votes to one or more candidates for the Tax Appraisal District for the Bell County Board of Directors for 2025. And I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Just I want one quick question for you. So once we cast our vote, taking into consideration that Mr. Kenny Wells will represent the good of the city of Colleen, that's one thing. That's our representative to stand up, fight for us, push our agenda, what we want. But we also have an option to vote for a second person.
You have the option to split up your 552 votes however you would like for one or multiple candidates, two, three, four, five candidates, but taking into account that other entities will be voting, and those votes will be tallied. Top five vote getters will be on the board.
Right, so we do want a representative for Colleen. So I highly recommend, council, that we give all our 552 votes to Mr. Kenny Wells, who was nominated from this council to be our representative, because I do want us to have a voice. But that's just my opinion. Any more discussion before we move on? Madam Secretary.
RS 24208, consider a memorandum resolution entering into an interlocal agreement with Bell County to allow the Colleen Police Department to partner with Bell County Juvenile Probation.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good afternoon, Assistant Police Chief Gerhart.
Can you hear me all right?
Oh, yes, sir.
First item, I've got three items now. The first item is the interlocal agreement with Bell County Juvenile Services. This interlocal agreement will establish a collaboration between KPD and Bell County Juvenile Services, Juvenile Probation, Namely. KPD will partner with juvenile probation officers and accompany them on home visits for these juvenile probationers. It's a valuable opportunity for KPD officers to engage directly with these juvenile probationers and their families. The benefits are that KPD officers will acquire a deeper understanding of how to recommend and provide services, fostering positive relationships with probationers beyond that traditional law enforcement interactions that we have with them. And the juvenile probation officers will benefit with the added security of having additional personnel and police officer on scene. Bell County Juvenile Services will reimburse the city for up to $60 per hour for salary and benefits for the officers working on that project. Estimated current year fiscal, fiscal year 25 revenue, $7,500. We're talking about 10 to 12 hours a month is what we're estimating. The projected revenue will be included in a future budget amendment. And of course, our recommendation is that we authorize the city manager, if he does need, enter an interlocal agreement with Bell County Juvenile Services to allow KPD officers to assist Bell County Juvenile Probation with their home visits. I'll be happy to answer any questions, Jeff.
Chief, there are no questions. Madam Secretary. Did somebody push? Okay, we'll work on that. We do have council member board, I apologize.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Assistant Chief Gerhart.
Good evening.
A quick question here. Are there common situations where these types of visits are necessary, where we, where it's beneficial for an officer to be there outside of kind of building rapport? Are some of the situations where it's dangerous for these probation workers?
Certainly, and it's, it is a, like a symbiotic relationship there. I mean, our officers are getting to interact with these juvenile offenders and probationers, if you will. But yes, the probation officers obviously will benefit from the added security of having added personnel. And this is something we've done in the past informally, when we had a dedicated youth services unit that would ride out with them occasionally, especially if there was one where they anticipated some potential issues because of the nature of the case that was involved.
Got you. You answered my question. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You kind of answered one of my questions. The other one, is there, will there be any instances where we just send our folks out for a visit? Will they request that we just go if they don't have someone, or it'll always be teams?
It'll be a team. We won't go out, because we have, we don't do juvenile probation visits. These are simply a, it's a condition of the probation that the particular person is on, juvenile offenders in this case, and we will go as needed when requested by the probation department.
Thank you.
And Chief, I have one question that was presented to me, and it's about the hours they will be working, and one of my concerns is if they're on duty, and you know, residents want us to be on duty and serve in our community, how would that work for the residents here and also the one at home to make it clear that it won't affect the way we protect and serve our community?
Sure, that's a great question. This will not take officers off the road, this will not take officers away from their normal duties and normal shift assignments. This will actually be an extra duty assignment that officers can sign up for ahead of time. We will get that scheduled ahead of time from the probation department, and they will request us on a certain date at a certain time, and that'll be something that the officers sign up, there'll be an extra duty assignment, and that's why we have the reimbursement in there that will pay us for any extra personnel costs that are involved there.
All right, thank you, Chief. Madam Secretary.
RS 24209, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the purchase of police uniforms, duty gear, and accessories from Galls LLC in an amount of $75,000 for fiscal year 2025. duty gear, and accessories from Galls LLC in an amount of $75,000 for fiscal year 2025.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, this is for police uniforms and equipment, as it says. Police Department procures uniforms, duty gear for both police officers and jail staff from Galls LLC. These items are essential for ensuring the safety of employees during dangerous situations and for their immediate identification. And due to the rigorous demands of police work, regular replacement of uniforms is necessary, all purchases will be made through the Texas Association of School Boards by board contract. For FY '24, just for a little historical background, we spent $78,000 with Galls approximately. The current fiscal year '25, we project to spend about $75,000. Police Department has budgeted funds available for this purchase. City staff recommends that city manager or unauthorized representative be granted permission to proceed with the purchase of police uniforms and accessories from Galls LLC via the TASB Byboard, contract 67022, with the expenditure not exceeding $75,000 in city funds for the current fiscal year. Additionally, the authorization includes any illegally permitted change orders.
Thank you, Chief. There are no questions for you. Madam Secretary?
RS 24210, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the purchase of police equipment, body armor, and accessories and ammunition from GT Distributors, Inc., in an amount of $331,650 for fiscal year 2025.
All right, I promise this is the last one for me. I feel a little bit like the fire department here. Police duty gear and ammunition. Again, annual purchase, police department purchase, duty gear, body armor, and ammunition from GT Distributors. GT Distributors is also the sole authorized distributor for Vista Outdoors, that's the ammunition parent company for the ammunition we use. The contracts, ammunition is purchased under the Techmuse contract, while duty gear and body armor are acquired through the TASB Byboard. Again, historical background, FY '24, we spent approximately $132,000 on ammunition and $255,000 on duty gear and body armor. FY '25, projected expenses are $152,000 for ammunition and $180,000 for duty gear and body armor. The FY '25 expenses are projected to be approximately $332,000 total, and the department has allocated funds for this expense in our budget. And again, the recommendation is that the city manager or unauthorized designated be given official or given approval to complete the purchase of the duty gear, body armor, and ammunition from GT Distributors through the Techmuse and TASB Byboard, purchasing cooperatives, total expenses not to exceed $332,000 in city funds for the current fiscal year. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chief. I just wanted to point out to the residents that's new here, the council is not asking any questions. These two items, the uniform, the armor gear, and also the ammunition comes before the council periodically. This is something that they need to function to protect our cities, the wear and tear of uniform and, you know, ammunition, they have to practice to keep them cold in regulation. So if they're not asking questions on some of the items, these are items that come before us on a regular basis. With that being said, Chief, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Madam Secretary?
RS 24211, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the procurement of fleet parts through Heel of Texas, Lone Star Truck Group, Mack Hike Ford, Napa Third Coast Distributors, and O'Reilly in an amount of $598,000 in tires through Southern Tire Mart in an amount of $250,000 for fiscal year 2025.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good afternoon, Mrs. Tangelin.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor and council members. This item is for the procurement of fleet parts and tires. A little background, Fleet Services maintains and repairs 1,045 units of fleet. That requires that we purchase parts and tires. The cost on parts and tires are charged to the respective department when we use. Parts are purchased from multiple vendors totaling approximately 1.3 million annually, and the primary vendors for parts are Hyola Texas, Lone Star, Mack Hike Ford, Napa, and O'Reilly. The primary vendor for tires is Southern Tire Mart. This is actually the actual for 2024 for these vendors, these are the discounts we got with these vendors, and we estimate $598,000 this fiscal year for these vendors. To note that the estimated amounts may vary, but the total overall for primary vendors for parts will not exceed $598,000. The recommendation is that city council approve the procurement of the fleet parts through these vendors for the parts in the amount for $598,000 and for the tires for $250,000, and authorize the city manager or his designated to execute any and all change orders within the amount set by state and local law. Have any questions?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary?
RS 24212, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the purchase of maintenance and repairs of HVAC equipment through the Brant Companies and Johnson Controls in an amount of $264,215 for fiscal year 2025.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, Mrs. Luciano.
Hi.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Manager. As previously stated, I'm discussing the HVAC repairs and maintenance purchase for FY '25. Building Services uses HVAC companies to perform necessary repairs and maintenance on existing HVAC units with a budget of $392,427. The Brant Companies is frequently used for maintenance and repair of large complex units at the police department and other city facilities. The police department currently has a two-year agreement with the Brant Companies for annual maintenance and inspection. Johnson Controls is used to service the Killeen Regional Airport. Aviation is currently in an agreement with Johnson Controls that expires April 30th and is requesting an enter into a four-year agreement which would start March 1st. The pricing for both the Brant Companies and Johnson Controls is available through Byboard and Sourcewell purchasing cooperative contracts. Building Services projects a total expenditure of $264,215 for HVAC maintenance and repairs in fiscal year '25 with the Brant Companies and Johnson Controls. This includes $231,558 allocated for maintenance with the Brant Companies, which covers the $21,558,000, which is the annual service agreement that the police department currently has, and $32,657 for the first year of the four-year maintenance agreement with Johnson Controls. The recommendation is that city council authorize the city manager or his designated to authorize the purchase of HVAC maintenance and repair services through the Brant Companies LLC and Johnson Controls in the amount of $264,215 for fiscal year 2025, and authorize the city manager or designated to execute any and all change orders within the amount set by state and local law. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, there are no questions for you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary?
RS 24213, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding renewal for the National Mounted Warfare Foundation.
Thank you, Ms. McNair.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Background starts with the National Mounted Warrior Museum. Moving forward through the presentation will just be museum. It's a joint effort between the U.S. Army and the National Mounted Warfare Foundation, a nonprofit organization dedicated to supporting the mounted warrior story. Their respective responsibilities are listed below, with the Army providing the location, exhibit work, administrative, and infrastructural support, and the foundation being responsible for supporting the financial needs of the museum. The museum's mission is to honor the legacy of mounted warriors throughout history. In 2019, Killeen City Council approved the initial year of Mounted Warrior Foundation MOU, which concluded in September of this year, 2024. Under the previous MOU, hot tax funds received were awarded as monetary support. The Bell County interlocal agreement states that all Bell County hot tax must be expended in a manner that directly enhances and promotes tourism and the convention and hotel industry. On June 4th, 2024, the foundation provided a presentation and requests of a renewal of the MOU, including monetary support in the amount of $80,000. On September 3rd, 2024, the City of Killeen's FY '25 annual budget was adopted and included budgeted funds for the foundation as requested. The museum recently celebrated its official opening with a ribbon cutting on September 18th of 2024. Staff collaborated with the foundation staff to develop an MOU for the use of the hot funds. Funds will solely be used to pay for advertising, solicitations, and promotions that attract tourists and convention delegates to the City of Killeen or the museum, or for the funding of the, I'm sorry, or for funding the establishment improvement or maintenance of a visitor information center at the museum. The term of the MOU is another five years, as it was in the initial MOU, and it will be effective the first day of this fiscal year and concludes on the last day of fiscal year '29. So that would be October 1, 2024, through September 30th of 2029. Expenditures will be considered on a reimbursement basis in an amount not to exceed $80,000 per fiscal year. The foundation currently and will continue to provide quarterly expenditure reports to the finance department, make an annual presentation to city council, providing an overview of marketing and advertising activities, present the proposed use of funds during the fourth quarter of the community partner budget meeting. Staff recommends approval of the MOU renewal between the City of Colleen and the National Mounted Warfare Foundation for five years, beginning fiscal year twenty-five, concluding in fiscal year twenty-nine, and authorize the city manager or his designee to execute said agreement. And we have representation from the museum, or I'm sorry, the foundation, if there are any questions.
Who's here representing the foundation? Oh, Clarence. Oh, come on up. I didn't see you back over there.
I'll tie you back there.
Yes, sir, just in case they have a question. Thank you for that. Mr. Cagle, my question is to you about the MOU and Madam City Attorney. When it had the word advertisement, with the word advertisement, can we give some recommendations on how we may want to add something to that advertisement for the City of Colleen? It's when you come in. Is that same question? Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, you can do that.
Okay, some instance, Council, Councilmember Protem had, we had called me today to ask me a question. I wasn't sure about it. So one of the recommendations that, that, Ms. Cagle, I haven't even brought this to you. I was at Josie's this morning, Let Eat Texas, and she came up to talk to us. And one of the things that happened there was she made, I was talking about the Mounted Warrior Museum, stuff just in general. And she said that the general retired brought a guest and some friends to come there to eat. So when it came to me, is that we're doing advertisement, Mr. Clarence, is that can we have hyperlinks where they can go to City of Colleen slash downtown Colleen, City of Colleen slash different avenues when they go to the Mounted Warrior Museum, that they'll know that these places are there. If you go to this link, we got downtown, and that link on downtown businesses, it tells what types of businesses. And then council may recommend another link. This is where we have all of our different schools or store, whatever the City of Colleen, we can highlight with that advertisement, just to add on to it as a little tag, that people know what we have in our city. Just not putting our name up on the advertisement, but telling what we have to offer within the city. So that's something just to think about. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Ms. Tiffany and Mr. Clarence. Let me start by saying that, well, let me ask this question, just to be clear. So the council's already provided funding for the next five years going forward, at eighty thousand dollars per year for the next five years. Is that correct? Up to?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Sure, just for clarification, the council already approved the allocation of eighty thou, up to eighty thousand dollars per year for five years for the museum.
Oh, we, yes, sir, it's budgeted.
It's already budgeted, okay, very good. When I first came on council, I was and still am a big proponent of the museum. You know, back in the fall of twenty twenty-one, I had this initiative trying to put, sponsor a park out there for about fifty thousand, where we'd have the city logo to bring attention to the city. I was traveling from Ohio last month and seen a billboard. I don't remember what state it was in, but I did see a billboard relating to the museum. And I also noticed it had the word Colleen, Texas there, and it was just in a regular font or text, and that was it. And I said, okay, that's great, but what is that kind of communicating about the city? And of course, it's about the museum. But my concern is, when folks come here, how much they are compelled to engage with our city. I was there for the grand opening of the event, actually with my father. He served in Second Armored Division. And when I walked out the museum, I made it my duty to look at the exit, to see if there was anything to highlight the city. A kiosk something. I couldn't find anything. And that was a little frustrating to me, because we're putting eighty thousand dollars, have been for the past five years, in advertising, advertising. We're going into doing this campaign all over again, but when you're on the grounds, there's nothing tangible that says, hey, go engage the City of, engage Colleen, right? And that's something I've been asking for. I've been talking about every time this museum conversation comes up. But to get to the point which is more significant, I'm curious to know what the numbers are of activity as of today for the museum since it opened.
Sure, I can provide that to you. So the museum's been open about forty days since the groundbreaking. We're in what we is designated as a leveling year, so between twelve and eighteen months is when we educate the community on getting to that top number that our research has shown that we have the potential to meet, which is about three hundred and seventy seven, seven thousand, four hundred and seventeen visitors a day. We have had a total of five thousand, one hundred and seventy-four visitors, with seventeen hundred and seventy being from outside the MSA, which is about thirty-four percent currently. That compared to the National Museum of the Army in Fort Belvoir, they're averaging about thirty-five visitors a day. So it's incumbent upon us as we continue to move forward. There were, I was out eating the other day, and there were people that were asking me about the museum and asking when it was going to open. So education is a big piece of what we need to continue to do. And Saturday is our biggest day by far, thus far. We had, we always, when we conduct a tour, we always bring someone down downtown, whether it's to Let's Eat Texas or to Taiwan Dragon. We had a group of individuals from Sun City, about forty of them that we took to eat there. So we always, we partner as much as we can with the city. We do have plans to install kiosks as funding becomes available that will direct people, just as you are. Technology is a big piece of marketing and advertising and billboardings, but the kiosk will direct people where to go to eat in Colleen, other places that they can go during their stay here, direct them to hotel sites where if they're staying overnight, they can be directed to. In that forty-one days, one thing we haven't, haven't been doing, and with some advice that we're going to, we're going to begin doing, is asking a direct question. When a visitor comes in, we collect this data, and we're going to ask the direct question, are you, are you staying in a hotel? Are you staying overnight? Because we do know, I mean, it's simple, the longer they stay, the more they spend, and the better that is, affects economic development. And we hope that this is a vehicle that, as they come here and they see the things here, it encourages them to move. Because we've got a lot of, a lot of great things in the city and the regional community as well. We, one of the really exciting things that we're doing as far as attracting folks is, in combination with other events, we're very proud to help sponsor hometown hero banners with the city. And we do have a lot of heroes that are on those banners that made it through. And that's, that's a real treasure of doing the work that I do, is to meet the type of people I get to meet and to work with the type of people. But through briefs for vets, we'll bring about one hundred and twenty-five, it looks like, ROTC cadets from Hutto, Liberty Hill, the Austin area, in combination with our local school district. It's something that we've done since we've been able to do, and this will be the first time that the building is actually open with exhibits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have more questions. Councilmember Segar.
I wasn't done, actually.
Oh, you're not finished? Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for that explanation. And just so folks know, the museum is beautiful, it's a very nice facility inside and out. I know there's plans to expand it over time. Exhibits are phenomenal, so had a great experience there. I just want to make sure that within all the investment that the city's putting toward it, that we are effectively being able to promote the city on the site, as well as how we're doing with the billboards. But that's all I've got. Thank you.
Councilmember Segar.
Thank you, Mayor, and my question was kind of in line, because I wanted you to see if you had those numbers. What was the numbers you said on a daily basis of how many people you're getting to come through there?
On a daily basis, we've had, oh, daily. So I'll break it down. We've had six hundred and seventy-eight come on a Tuesday, eight eighteen on Wednesday. Thursday is about eight, a hundred and eighty-eight. Friday's nine eighty-six, and Saturday's about sixteen ninety-seven.
That's, that's quite a bit. And you mentioned the other museum. Do you know how many? What was the other museum you mentioned?
The National Museum of the Army in Fort Belvoir, Virginia.
That's, that's been around for a long time.
Yes, sir, they opened November of, I believe, twenty twenty.
And how many, did you say how many they average on a daily basis?
Thirty-five currently.
Wow, so that's big. So I don't know if that's the excitement here of being a new museum, but that's, so, and the reason I ask that, because we're investing, we're spending money, and I think that the thing that we're trying to do is exactly what you just mentioned. We're trying to get people to come here. I know a lot of those people there, I was there this Saturday, they were doing a treasure hunt there, and there was people there that are visiting. But a lot of those people do occupy some of our places. They come and eat and stuff like that. But what I want to say, I think it's a two-way streak, you know, we want, when you pull up Colleen, when you Google Colleen, what I encourage people to do is start taking pictures of the museum. You know, a lot of times, it's, you know, I pull up Colleen, and it says Lake Belton, and it's like, that's not Colleen. And it's because we don't have a lot of monuments or, you know, we do, they're just not promoted. And I think even us as a city, we need to start pushing that, you know, taking pictures of that, putting it out there in our marketing, put it out there so when people type in Colleen, Texas, they see the museum. I just did it right now. It still hasn't pulled up, so I know we got some work to do, even on Wikipedia and things like that, the things that, that Colleen has to offer. Because if we work on that, I know it will definitely attract even more visitors. So, you know, I would like to see some of that, you know, you mentioned about marketing, but doing things like that also, so, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, and in all transparency, that Councilmember Segar and I both sit on that board as a representative for the City of Colleen. With that being said, Councilmember Adams.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Thanks, Ms. Enner, and Ms., excuse me, thanks for the presentation. I, you know, I remember when you guys first started this, before even the first ounce of dirt was dug. And I know citizens constantly ask about the money expenditure, but in line with all the other statements previously made is, I don't know if Mr. Cagle or Ms. McNair or you, Ms. Enner, can answer this. Who would do the, how could we figure out the return on investment? So I know oftentimes when we put out money for hotel, it brings some money back in so that residents can see the, that the proof is in the pudding. I don't know, would it be to us, would it be the chamber, or would it, would it be the foundation?
Sure, I think there's a couple of ways. One, they indicated what they were going to do is, as everyone signs in, ask them if they're staying in a hotel, motelling in Colleen, so you can get some idea there. But the other, other number is just, there are general metrics available for the number, per person expenditures for visitors, so they can, they can take their annual number of visitors, time those metrics, and get a, get a reasonable dollar amount.
And on top of the impact on our hotel occupancy tax, like, when they stay in our hotels, I know you, we can track how much is increased, especially since the doors open. And just, so we, that way we can show, since this opened, what was the economic impact of the museum?
Yes, sir, I think what they're going to start, what they're going to start doing is trying to capture every person that comes there and stays in a hotel, because they might add all sorts of hotel nights, but if there's something wrong with the economy, the hotel nights could go down. So you, just because they opened and hotel nights are up, doesn't necessarily mean it was because of the museum. And so they're going to, they're going to do their best to capture that information as visitors come in. So we'll have some, that'll be a real concrete number.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate that. That's all I have.
Mayor Protem.
So thank you for being here with us today. Museums, you know, definitely impact our local communities. And there's a lot of, a lot of good, positive things that can come from this, but I think that the metrics and being able to track our advertising are extremely important. Madam, you mentioned the hyperlink. I think that could, Councilmember Adams' question, could be another way of tracking said metrics. And there's IT could help figure out how to filter those, but that could be another viable opportunity to keep track of that data, because we will need that. But the beautiful thing about this is, not only are we showcasing our rich cultural heritage, our attachment to the military, and all those beautiful things that come along with us being the heartbeat of Central Texas, to our constituency, why is this important to you? Because it creates new opportunities for us as far as our economy is concerned. There are drivers that become our part of our responsibility, right? So while we're looking at this museum to generate traffic, it then becomes our community's responsibility collectively to figure out ways how we can not only get people to come, but then to stay and to visit and to shop our local businesses and to patronize our restaurants and things like that. So there is a really, really unique opportunity that we have here collectively as a community to build our social cohesion that I'm very excited about, and I hope that our citizens can see that big picture for the long run. So thank you for, for that, and it's some really good questions regarding that. You mentioned a kiosk, and I do, I do not have the information right now, but during my recent trip, we did get some information about a kiosk opportunity that might not take away from the funds that you're already receiving from us for advertising purposes and could be a good viable option, so I'll be happy to share that information with you as well. Thank you.
I'd like to thank both of you all. Thank you, Magna, thank you, Clarence.
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel, I just want to say, Councilmember Segar, you had an excellent point with Councilmember Mayor Protem. Mr. Cagle, taking Mr. Councilmember Segar and the link I brought up and also what Mayor Protem added, can we get more of Mounted Warrior Museum on our website so our residents will know that we, that it's here and the hours, some kind of way to just push that out a little bit more? And I know our communication team does a tremendous, excellent job. And going back to you, Councilmember Segar, but if they don't know what we want and how we want it to go out, they're not moving. Because one thing about Mr. Cagle, he has spoken to all his executive directors, that we as a council move together. They won't move unless he say move, but we got to tell them what we want. And I'm glad that you brought that up, because we can do a better job, was Councilmember Boyd saying. And Councilmember Adams too, we put eighty thousand dollars into this partnership, and what is in return, but we got to push it also. And I think the hyperlink is just the beginning, the great things. But before I close out, Mr. Cagle, do you have anything else you would like to say?
No, ma'am, but we will get a lot more information on our city website.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And I'm going to go back to the presenter, Ms. McNair. Ma'am, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to tie in with everything that was just said, our CVB staff, they are actually doing a rebranding, and it's going to be Visit Colleen. And so there's a new website, there's new logos, there's all of this stuff going on with that. And so with this being the hotel tax, and it's for tourism and to draw convention, folks come, visitors come into the city for conventions, I will have that staff reach out to the foundation and talk to them directly about how the exchange on the websites can operate through our visitor-centered website versus our city, or not so much our city, but on, in my department, we are actually working on revamping all of our division websites. So there will be a hyperlink to the CVB, which could, will lead to the museum and what they are doing there.
That's excellent, but also any resource we can use, the city or yours, is great. But what did you call that you rebranded, what department?
It's the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Okay. Thank you for sharing our information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary.
RS twenty-four, two, one, four, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing an agreement with Bartlett Electric Cooperative, Inc. to provide power to the Emergency Operations Center Fire Station Number Four Complex.
Good afternoon, Mr. Rebell.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council. As stated, this is an agreement with Bartlett Electric Cooperative, associated with the ELC Fire Station Four Complex to provide electrical power service. The agreement amount includes thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty-three cent for the construction and the supply of a transformer to support the electrical service that will be associated with the meter. And then it also includes a two-year agreement associated with guaranteeing a minimum monthly bill payment of seven hundred and eighty dollars. This shows the location of the fire station. As you all are aware, it's currently under construction. And so staff is recommending that the city manager be authorized to enter into this agreement with Bartlett Electric Cooperative to provide the electrical service needed for the ELC Fire Station Four Complex. Also, our fire chief, as well as our city engineer are in the room to support as necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Cagle, Chief, Mr. Cagle, Mr. Rebell, thank you. Chief, would any, the engineer, would you like to have anything to say before we move on? No, chief, no, okay, thank you. Counsel, there are no questions. Thank you, Mr. Rebell. Communication, do you need time to set up before I go into citizen comments? All right, all right, Counsel, we are now going to citizen comment. Sorry, did somebody? Oh, I'm sorry. For the individuals that are new to our council meetings, the citizen comments on our agenda items, you have counts, residents, you have four minutes. And Counsel, you have one minute allotted for City Council to respond with a statement or explanation without engaging in dialogue. And if I mispronounce your name, please excuse me. Ms. Lynn Bedard. Good afternoon, ma'am, you have four minutes. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Lynn Bedard. I'm a resident in Yaw Ranch for about two and a half years now. When I purchased my home over there, I said, hey, this is great, you know, I got the police right down the street. I've got electric across the street. I can see a cell tower from my, from my home. What I forgot to look at was Featherline Road. I was told that it would get expanded immediately. That hasn't happened. The neighborhood has expanded a lot. There's a situation in the neighborhood where the Phase One, which is north of a green belt, they can, they can exit the neighborhood onto Stagecoach Road. The rest of us cannot. We have to go out onto Featherline. Featherline has continued to become busier and busier and busier over the last two years with Chaparral High School opening, and then the middle school that has no sidewalk, all the parents have to take their kids there. It has become a dangerous road. In the afternoon, well, there's actually morning, afternoon, evening sometimes, I will sit in a line of six cars trying to leave Melmason Road to turn onto Featherline. God forbid anybody is trying to turn left, because it takes forever. I see people taking more and more risk, trying to pull out between cars that are coming. There's not but three or four car lengths between the traffic that's traveling north and south on Featherline. My grandson lives in Phase One. I cannot drive to Phase One, which is above the green belt, without going out onto Featherline, taking my life in my hands at times. I can walk there faster than I can drive there. I'm getting old. There's going to come a time when I don't want to walk all the way over there. We need that road to be expanded before we build more houses, because they're all going to be coming out onto Featherline also, on Melmason Road. You're going to increase the traffic, increase the danger. I'm waiting for some major, major accidents to happen on Featherline. You told us we are going to get a road. We don't have the road. Featherline is narrow, narrower than my residential street, and it's constant traffic. I, I can wait five minutes to turn right. Turning left can take ten minutes or more. Please, do not allow more housing to be put in that area until we have a road that can handle it. Thank you very much.
Well, congratulations. Your vote on approving the agenda the way you did just robbed citizens of anywhere between four and twenty minutes of addressing you. Some people script out their four minutes and may have wanted to speak on the items that are not public hearings, who may not be able to be here on the third of December. For example, they may have wanted to ask you, this is how it is on the agenda, thank you, sir. They may have wanted to ask you if you actually researched the nominees for the tax appraisal district board. When it came time to nominate individuals to represent Colleen on state boards, you hadn't even looked at or researched any of them in the week that you had their names. Other citizens may have wanted to ask about why we would go with Bartlett Cooperative, or why staff didn't present the thirty-eight thousand, one hundred, twenty-three dollars, sixty-three cents we have to pay for services to be extended before we can even start receiving electricity there. I would like to know if anybody on the council has asked that question, because to me, that seems like it's a lot of money to just not present to you as far as the upfront cost of this. And then when you look, we're looking at rates that they have revised in two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three. I don't know if these are the current rates, because it doesn't say that they're current rates for two thousand twenty-four. The demand rate that we're paying at six dollars and fifty cents per kilowatt hour of billing demand can be adjusted during peak hours if we're using a lot of electricity during that time. Our energy charge almost ten cents per kilowatt hour and a customer charge of seventy-five dollars and seventy cents per month. That's a whole lot of money. Maybe we should check how we're spending money, because we're spending money wasting it on that. We're spending money wasting it on, I don't know, having the county try to put someone in jail for trespass, only for it to be dismissed. So let's think about how we're spending our money. Let's think about how we're spending it with the National Mounted Warfare Foundation. I've seen their billboards around here locally, and you know what they advertise? They don't advertise the City of Colleen. They don't even advertise the museum. They advertise the Buy a Brick fundraiser for the foundation. And then at the very bottom, there's just this little thing that says Colleen. That's it. That's what our four hundred thousand dollars on the first agreement had paid for, what more of the money had paid for in between. And no, while it may be budgeted, or the city manager may have said he set it aside, it has not been approved yet. Let's also talk about that electricity when it comes to Featherline. So if we don't have enough electricity service in the area to handle the fire station on Tremere that is just to the west of the Featherline project that is being zoned, then what does that mean for quality electric service for anybody in that area? Let's talk about the fact that there's only one ingress egress right now for these scheduled three hundred houses, which technically, I guess, if you look at our ordinance, it would limit them to thirty R ones with only one ingress or egress. We do that for safety. So there is a provision in there that says, hey, the developers would be willing to possibly extend part of that road, but it's not going to go all the way to Tremere. So then the city would have to come out and extend and widen Melmason Road. And then, when you get done with that, you exit out onto Tremere, which is another two-lane county road. So either way, you're funneling six hundred, three hundred new houses worth of traffic onto two, two-lane county roads that are thin, that don't have any curbs, that don't have any sidewalks, that have ditches on the sides of them that I have seen eighteen-wheelers get stuck in. When it rains, it's horrible, and you're going to send all this extra traffic through there with three schools coming and three schools right there.
Mr. Sean Price, good afternoon. Mr. Price, you have four minutes.
Evening, Counsel.
Evening, counsel.
Good evening.
So I just had a question with the public hearing is that with Yaw Ranch, Phase 7 and 8, Turnbow Ranch, Phase 1, 2, 3, Levy Crossing, Phase 1 and 2, Preserve Thousand Oaks, Victory Ranch, and Heritage Oaks, are all of these going to be HOAs? All that's HOA now? Those are neighborhoods, those are subdivisions, HOA communist organizations, right? Just curious if that's what that, what that is. We're going to have all the concrete walls around each one of those subdivisions, right? Everything cordoned in like a present, so. RS 24-207, why isn't that on a, a ballot? Or is it that it's regulated by the county? On 24-208, will this be dealing with any of the deportations of illegal children? RS 24-212, will this cover any of the buildings that are already under consideration to be demolished for the new $190 million City Hall? So are we going to repair the AC for this building, for the building across the street, things like this? Are we going to, does it include these buildings that are to be replaced? Just curious if we're spending money on something that we, we're going to be tearing down here soon to replace with a new city hall for $190 million? And some other things, I think, that are in that $190 million, a couple of fire stations in there, right? And for RS 24-2114, I noticed that the EOC didn't have, mention any backup power systems for the emergency operations center. Is that included in the price or is that going to be added on or is that an afterthought? Because EOCs need to have backup power regardless. So, um, if our cell towers have backup power generators, I think this facility of this nature should have the same thing, at least to operate the building during emergency, just like a hospital. If this is supposed to be an emergency response center. Just my statement, but it's not stated in there that any of the money is spent for that. So those are my questions. Not that I expect to get any answers from you, but thank you for your time.
Hey, Mr. Cagle, I didn't see Chief Kabinsky, please. You know, we spent, um, thank you, Mr. Cagle. I just want to talk to the residences here and the residences. Look, we spent a lot of time and energy on this training facility and that fire station there. And I want you to understand that we would not invest, especially our fire chief, into an area. And, and could you please explain why we had to go with this company and the generate? Well, I'll let you tell it. Why we decided with this company, which we didn't have a choice, but would you explain overall, please?
Uh, yes, to answer a couple of questions. First of all, Bartlett Electric Supply is the only supplier that is available to us to provide electric to the building. Uh, if we don't sign a contract with them, then we don't have any electricity to provide to the building. Part of that is that they have to provide their transformer that converts the electricity over to be able to be fed into the two buildings in the complex. Secondly, uh, the generators are part of the complex. We are currently awaiting a decision from FEMA on some grants for an emergency generator. We have contingency plans in place depending on when that gets approved, uh, if it gets approved. We have some indications that the generator grant submission will be approved. Uh, it's made its way through TDM. They have now submitted it over to FEMA for their consideration. And we know that FEMA can take, um, as much time as they like to get these approved. We have been given indications that the generator grants are the highest priority, uh, in the wake of Winter Storm Yuri for our region.
Thank you, chief, because I just didn't want to go on with a misunderstanding that we couldn't use TXU because they're not in that area. That's why we had to go with this company and it is in the package. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Heather McNilly, good afternoon, you have four minutes.
Hello, counsel. I must, um, first state, I'm extremely disappointed that you canceled the public hearing PH 24-049. I travel for work, as many of you know, and I changed my flight to fly in to be for this at my own cost and my own expense of hundreds of dollars. And do you know where I'll be on December 3rd now? Where I was supposed to be today. So thank you for that. I must thank you, Mr. Adams, for being the only council member to take into consideration of the citizens' voices. Now I'll say what I prepared while being on that plane. I come to you today, counsel, to let you know that the continuously building of R1 homes goes against the 24 plan and all the recommendations of the appointed committee. Whew, sorry, I'm a, a little, little frustrated, sorry, I don't mean to be. We, that committee, was selected to represent the residents of the city and the people spoke. They no longer wanted to see subdivisions brought into the city of Colleen and neighborhoods were to be built instead. Neighborhoods with diverse housing options to include townhomes, condominiums, senior housing, tiny homes, large lots, ranchettes, and farm-style houses. All to include pocket parks within those communities, shopping centers, grocery stores, and other, and restaurants. Where will my mother live? She doesn't want to maintain a yard, not in Colleen. Where will my children live? They don't want kids, not in Colleen. I'm ready to upgrade my house. Guess I'll go move to Nolanville, Slado, Belton, Florence, Temple, because they have executive homes there, not here. 85% of the homes in Colleen are being built are R1s. That is maintaining homes that are within one subcategory of group. You are not allowing us to grow as a community. You are pigeonholing us in one subgroup. We are a city of homes, not a city of communities or neighborhoods. R1 houses do not keep residents here. It does nothing but drive them away. There is no entertainment option shopping and our airport needs more flight options. There's not even signs to the airport. Why isn't there signs at the, about the museum where the airport is for people to know we even have one? The city staff continues to use the words "big ideas" and "fiscally responsible" with all these R1 subdivisions that are not part of the comp plan. But yet our city manager continues to tell us how much tax money we lose on every house of the VA Disabled purchasing these R1 homes that are being built. We want to bring in tax revenue. The previous land use map had this property listed as estate-style housing. Now we're bumping it down to R1? The Committee of 2040 Plan was told by staff switching to mixed use would be able to have complete neighborhoods and no longer have subdivisions. But yet you only approve subdivisions with every one that has been brought to you. This areas was also listed as controlled growth. The reason why is because of the flooding, the drainage, and all of the city services. My property is still flooding. When's the energy, energy, uh, you know, mister, coming out to my property? Onion, it's got overlay on it, constant, every month you are re-overlaying Onion Road and yet you want more traffic going on it.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up. The next person up is Mr. James Seals. Ma'am, do, you have to, you have to ask the council for that.
Oh, I didn't know that, I'm so sorry. How so? Would any of you please speak? Would any of you like to speak?
You have to ask them if you want an extra minute.
Oh, can I have an extra minute?
Councilmember Adams? Councilmember Boyd? Council, yes, Councilmember Segaro? Okay, you have a one minute, ma'am.
Okay, sorry.
Apology accepted.
Sorry, let me, um, I, the previous, uh, let me, sorry. Rees is our spread too thin. The street and maintenance and drainage are major issues. There has not been an updated flood map since 2008. The Donut Hole area is in conjunction to this property and that's why I bring it up within flood zones. School buses and garbage trucks are ruining the overlay on the streets, but yet that hasn't been fixed. Where are the capital improvement plans? For those streets that were promised to be fixed and the drainage, there's still none. There is a reason why this area was controlled. It's because the city needs to focus on fixing the things for the current residents before preparing for other residents that aren't going to pay those property taxes that we so say we need. Think about it. Do we need more subdivisions or do you want to continue to create more food deserts? Is your legacy R1 homes?
Ma'am, your time is up. Oh, you're welcome. James Seals, you have four minutes, sir. And counsel, he did give you all the same presentation that you should have received in your email. He gave a hard copy to each one, so you do have it in front of you as a reference as he speak. Good afternoon, sir, you have four minutes.
Good afternoon. I'd just say first and foremost, I really don't understand the harm in giving citizens an opportunity that came out here tonight, uh, to speak at the public hearing. You could have simply tabled the vote, allowed these people that came out to speak to you an additional time, hear what the city had to say, hear what the citizens had to say, table the vote, and, and go back on the third. Like, I think it was just a real bad missed opportunity from this council to hear from the citizens once again. Something that's, people have said about you a lot and I think you just missed that opportunity to give us another chance to speak about this. I, I provided the packet, I'm not going to go over that right now, I'm going to, I'm going to save that. But I provided you a petition of 534 signatures from citizens in Llewellyn, Yaw Ranch, and Prairie View, the people that are most impacted by this rezoning. Those are the voices you should be listening to. This is not compliant with the comp plan. Everything in that packet, everything that has a quote and a page number is from the comp plan. That's not from me. Those aren't my words, those are your words. This is what you stated you wanted to do moving forward in the city of Colleen and R1 subdivisions was not it. It was to be complete neighborhoods and this is not that. It's not fiscally responsible. You're still not considering EV, or exemptions in your fiscal planning. You're not going to make $7,000 acre. You're not even going to make 5,000 because you're doing R1s. It will not support the infrastructure you build around it. Everything is in the comp plan, it tells you that. The comp plan told you about developers building subdivisions. And it quotes, "They focus on building exclusively new single-family homes for entry-level buyers hurts Colleen's ability to offer wider variety of options to residents, both in price and type. The result, it pulls demand away from the resale and reinvestment market. It pushes the city further into a financial hole by adding more service and infrastructure liabilities than the tax base can support." When the city comes up here and tells everyone that the reason they're going to have a higher tax rate or lower services is because you disapprove this or potentially disapprove this, it's misguided. You're going to have that hole because you keep approving these. You're supposed to be approving mixed use, complete neighborhoods, and you're not doing that. Substantial need, so, you know, well, let me go back to, uh, minor arterial. The, the road will not be built before the homes and I'm going to tell you why. You anticipate having Featherline reconstructed before the homes. I'm sure you anticipated having Featherline built in 2014 when the city signed the memorandum of resolution. I'm sure the city anticipated having Chaparral reconstructed in 2015, 2018, 2020, 2025, and 2029. And I'm sure the city expected to start on Willow Springs before five years. And here, it just got its funding pulled from the design phase. So why won't that happen to Featherline? There's no guarantee. Things happen. COVID happens, whatever happens, it pulls your funding. There's no way you're going to guarantee that unless you put it in writing. The substantial need. I'd like one more minute, please, if you may.
We'll follow the correct protocol, Councilmember Alvarez. Councilwoman Cobb, Councilmember Solomon. Mayor Protem, sir, you have been granted one minute.
The substantial need, there are in fact 100%, 1,500 homes currently in development within a three-mile radius of this location. You can go to Bell County Plats, pull down every plat. There will be 4,000 homes between just Turnbow Ranch and Thousand Oaks, which is in one mile of this. No one's spurning growth. No one's trying to stop the, the growth of this city. What we're trying to ensure is the safety and general welfare of the citizens that live in this area, to ensure that the roads are reconstructed to support it, to ensure the water and drainage analysis is done. I know you can scoff at that, but I'm, I'm asking the question. The, the water plan is five years old. The drainage plan is, I'm not sure, 13 years old. And the FEMA plan flood maps are 16 years old. We need this first. We need the roads. Please disapprove this when you vote next in council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Protem.
Uh, thank you, madam. Um, I just wanted to address the concern while some have said that they consider this a missed opportunity. I, I think while it was, there was an error regardless of what happened, for me, the way I look at it is that it's an increased opportunity for us to hear. You guys have had town halls, there's been meetings, there's been reports, um, but there has been also new information provided. So for me, from my perspective, turning that negative to a positive is this is an increased opportunity for us to hear from you all, which is why I requested for us to be able to hear you all, your all's comments through citizens' comments. So thank you all for those of you that have spoken and added some additional insight and some additional questions that we will then take into consideration. So with that, um, I do have a question. Um, is Mr. Revel in the? Oh, can we? Not yet. Outstanding. Okay, very good. I'll hold that, but I'll will submit my question, but thank you. I just, again, I just wanted to let the citizens know that I, um, I appreciate your feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and what Councilwoman Gonzalez was doing is Mayor Protem is bringing Mr. Revel, but the public hearing will be held next week till we can get more detail. But, uh, uh, and, and to answer Mr. Seal, I have the utmost respect for you, sir. Much respect. I'm not an expert. We hire people to be those experts and I do understand the passion and concern about it, but this council, half of the residents that's here, the ones that's at home, at home, we did make Featherline a top priority. That's a given. And it's not even about the building. It's more so about what's going on on Chaparral, the school, the kids. What touched our heart, I think, for me was the young lady. There was a student there, I don't know her position or title. That touched my heart because what the residents that, that are not aware of what's going on with Featherline, this would have never came into play because Chaparral was going to get built. The new Miller School, it was coming. It's not like it wasn't in the paper and people didn't know. What brought all this attention on that area is when development got ready to come in. So there's a lot of things that's going on for Chaparral. That's just my opinion. Like I say, I am not an expert. That's my opinion. I don't speak for this council. My opinion, just mine, not the council. And that's what I'm trying to say. We all have an opinion, how we think and how we feel, but I did not, I believe in the staff so much that they would not approve something that is going to hurt the city and going to put a strain on the resources that we have. And it's not an opinion, they are experts in this field. One more correction. In 2014, when all these agreements was made from my left to my right, we weren't even on the city council. I cannot be held accountable like you cannot be held accountable. When you go into a new job, you take on a new position, you move into an area, something's going to happen, but you can't be held accountable for what someone else put in black and white in the memo. This council, when we came together, This council, when we came together, I've been on here since 2017. I have so many different council members, some I have worked with. Each council have a different priority. And right now, Featherline is our number-one priority. That is. And I always believe the putting is in the proof. I would not sit up here and tell you something. I'm not running again. I can't run again. I'm maxed out. So I don't have anything to gain to give a political speech. I don't have a political speech because this is my last term. So I don't benefit from what I'm telling you. I'm telling you, the ones that's at home and the ones that's new in the audience, I commend Mr. Seale for everything he has done, but we have made that a priority. With that being said, Councilmember Cobb.
Thank you, mayor. You really said some of the sentiments that I feel in my heart also, but to be honest, to be just, and to be fair, is my job to District III as well as the constituents, and that's what I do. If I need to stop and say no, I say no, and I go and research. We work hard, and if you think that we would leave our constituents or people at a disadvantage, then you're wrong. Our staff, as well as this council, have looked at the plans, and we go out. Just because we don't write a sermon or write the information in the newspaper or tell you, you better believe we're working and we're watching. So do know that we will be just, will be honest, and will be fair, not to everyone, those who are building, those who are living, and those who have ideas.
I just want to make sure I understood you right. Did you say not to everyone or to everyone? Okay.
That might be my southern drawl, to everyone.
Yes, ma'am.
Everyone, everybody.
Okay.
We're going to be fair to everyone. We will never, yes, everyone.
That threw me off for a minute.
That was my southern drawl.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Councilmember Segaro.
Thank you, mayor. And it always, it's always concerning when we as a city sometimes, you know, people say we don't do what we're supposed to do, and it's been brought up a couple of times that what happened out there in Yow Ranch, you know, known as the Donut Hole, right? Things were, said that they were going to be done and never get done, but if I recall, Mr. City Manager, we had an update with that. I think it was last year, and we went through the whole items that were contracted. Somebody said, "Put it in writing," and I think we did put it in writing, and we went through that contract to make sure that everything was done, and we didn't find. And I don't know, you know, I speak a lot on perspectives, and so it could be just me. I know a lot of audiences speak, but when we went through that contract, you know, line by line, if I recall, everything was done. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So I just want to kind of reiterate because I, it always, you know, you get people that say things are not done, and I think we pretty much fulfill our obligations as a city.
Councilmember, oh, Councilmember Boyd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city of Colleen proactively constructed a right turn lane at the intersection of Featherline and Chaparral following the previous discussion we heard the citizens. The county proactively established a stop sign at the intersection of Featherline and Chaparral in response to the citizens. And ultimately, what we are asking for on Featherline, the council approved, which is for Featherline to get reconstructed or replaced, a brand-new road. We had a meeting probably about two months ago. We determined to use Seale Bond money to build the new Featherline Road. It's happening. It's on the conveyor belt. It's coming. It may not be when we want it to occur, but we can't control in succession how these go. There are tons of roads across the city of Colleen that need to be repaired, reconstructed, and maintained. Zephyr is one of them, okay? Just to name one. And this council, these seven unanimously, hearing the citizens, I want to make sure it's clear, said, "You know what? We're going to prioritize Featherline Road. It's prioritized. It's coming."
Councilmember Boyd, get an extra minute?
Yes.
Yes, yes, continue. You can keep going. They said yes.
So, and it goes back to putting things in writing, et cetera. It's there. It's coming. All right? Thank you.
Residents, I didn't have my glasses on, and I just want to make this clear before I call the next person. When you come up here and speak before the council, we're respectful. We don't cut you off. We're listening to you. You have your four minutes to speak, but we also have one minute to speak. You don't have to be rude and yelling from the audience, whoever that might be. If you want to talk to a council member, just stick around. After the meeting, you can. So let's show each other some respect. With that being said, we have one last person, Ms. Sue Stokes DeBose. Good afternoon, ma'am. You have four minutes.
Well, guess what? I'm here about Featherline Road. Big surprise. And I like what you say. I like that you all are, you know, promising things. Don't build more houses until you've shown that you're going to build that road, widen that road, okay? I'll go to my prepared words. I do not enjoy coming up here to speak. I really don't. But I felt that I had to because when I saw you were going to vote on this Featherline rezoning again so soon, I said, "That is wrong. That is wrong." Okay? It's wrong to not listen to your Planning and Zoning Commission again. It's wrong to portray Yow Ranch residents as selfish homeowners who don't want construction around them. That's not true. That's all wrong. Okay? I won't spend a lot of time detailing the continuing problems with Featherline. You all know it. It's an overburdened, two-lane road with no shoulder, no sidewalks. I just did that six months ago. I was up here. I did all that. I told you about seeing neighbors rear-ended, trying to turn into Yow Ranch from Featherline because there's no center turn lane. I could tell you about twisting my ankle the one time I tried to walk along Featherline. It's ruts. There's no sidewalk. There's no paved shoulder. There's nothing there. And you got kids that need to get to school, and the answer is to put more buses on the road? Silly, silly. Okay. I do appreciate the improvements to the Featherline-Chaparral intersection. I do. It makes a difference. If I have to get right there, I can do it now, and if nobody runs the stop sign. Featherline is not one intersection. Featherline is one and a half miles of unresolved traffic and safety problems that would be further compounded by the proposed rezoning. Okay? I don't need to detail all the problems. You all got the opposition document. I'm actually happy. Now you have two weeks to read that carefully, because I was going to ask you. Read it carefully. You've got time. But don't read it with a bias towards developers who are going to come, make their money, then go. Read it with a bias towards us homeowners who live there, who want to stay there, who want to be able to get out of our neighborhood, who not, don't want to be rear-ended coming into our neighborhood. It's widen the road. I'm glad you have a plan, but widen the road. Read this with a bias towards the constituents who live there and vote, okay? Because you will be remembered by how you vote. You don't want to be responsible for what past councils did and how it got to be this way. That's fine. I will remember this vote, okay? And everyone who signed a petition, everybody who couldn't get to the petition, we will remember. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for those kind words. Mr. Cagle.
Just to follow up on, Councilmember Boyd said, "The most powerful thing you do is when you vote and you give direction." And we're already negotiating with an engineering firm for Featherline Road, and you will see that in an upcoming agenda item as well as the documents to issue the debt. And comparing Featherline Road to Chaparral is apples and oranges. Chaparral Road will be done with a lot of federal money, and that comes with lots of strings and lots of years. Yeah, we can probably be driving on Featherline in about three years, and we don't believe at all that there'll be occupied houses. If this were going to be approved, we'll have Featherline in ahead of it. So, thank you.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I just, I want to also add that the city was also a recipient of some of the K-Tempel money for safety, for specifically Featherline was one of those spots. And now that the implementation plan has been completed, we're also eligible for additional funding. I just discovered last week, once we apply a court for, now we've done the planning grant, we'll be eligible for implementation money for not just that road but others. So the opportunities are all there, whether it's this road or any other roads that we have control of in the city.
Thank you. Mr. Cagle, would you say that it'll be two and a half years, if I'm reading this right, before we could see a house that will have infrastructure in place as far as the roads are concerned out there? If I'm not mistaken, it's going to take at least two and a half years to get that built, but during that time, we're working on the roads.
Yes, and if this zoning case is approved December 3rd, I think it's more like three years to be driving on Featherline Road.
Exactly.
I still believe that's going to be faster than you'd have occupied houses. There's a lot of work that goes in ahead of time, just to be prepared to build houses.
The key word, he says, occupied homes. So I want to, before we move on, just two things to the residents that may not know. Planning and zoning is a committee that the city council appoint. They're not experts. Our experts are our staff members. We can have residents serving on planning and zoning, zero, just whoever put in know about planning and zoning. So that's an opinion, just like our opinion. That's why we call staff up to correct us or to give us correct information. That's number one. And number two, I hope you can come here on next December the 3rd. One of the things that will be asked of staff to explain, to get clarity on why they approved this particular zoning item, and how does that fall within the comprehensive plan? Because a lot of times, we've been heard over and over, it's not in a comprehensive plan. They will go in detail to explain to you. Yes, it does fall in the comprehensive plan. So if you're not able to be here on December the 3rd, please, you can look at it on Internet or you can go back later and look at it when you have time, because this is video. With that being said, are you ready? We can continue communication. Can we continue? Okay, thank you. All right. We will go move on to consent agenda. Sorry about that. Madam Secretary.
RS 24207, RS 24208, RS 24209, RS 24210, RS 24211, RS 24212, and, excuse me, RS 24213, and RS 24214.
I apologize, I may overstep.
No, no overstepping. Mayor, I just wanted to say that I would request that RS 24-207 be removed from consent because there was no motion or direction on how to allocate those votes, and so it can't be approved with the consent agenda because we don't have that information from you.
So we would, see, that was not, that was, it was not clear on that.
I apologize. So if you can remove that from consent, and then you can vote on it separately and give me that information, move to allocate those votes in a certain way.
All right. Before we make a motion to approve the consent agenda, when you make that motion, please make that RS-24-207 is removed from that consent agenda.
Yes, ma'am. I make a motion to remove RS 24-207 from the consent agenda.
Is it to approve the consent agenda? That's the motion.
Make a motion to approve removing RS 24-207.
If I understood you correctly, you made a motion to approve the consent agenda except for RS-24-207. Okay? A second by Councilmember Adams.
Madam Mayor, a second.
All in favor, yes. The motion is approved, seven to zero. That was our last item for tonight. Before we close out, Madam Secret-
Madam Mayor?
Yes, we got another one.
We just removed our-
Oh, yes. Sorry, sorry. Oh, I'm moving. Yes, council. Can I get a discussion on that? It's basically we put Mr. Kenny Wells on it. We need a representative for the city. Councilmember Boyd? The 500, you still, did you just click on here? Okay, Councilmember Alvarez. Do we want to give the 552 votes to Mr. Wells, or do we want to divide them up?
I agree with what you said earlier, allocating them all to Mr. Wells.
We need a motion.
I've moved to allocate the city's 500, what was it, 54 votes?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two votes to Mr. Kenny Wells for director nominee for Tax Appraisal District of Bell County.
Councilmember Adams?
Madam Mayor, a second.
All in favor, yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Just to remind to all the residents that listen, are here, the item of Featherline will be on our December 3rd agenda. Can I get a motion? Councilmember Boyd?
Motion to adjourn.
Councilmember Segaro? All in favor? Meeting adjourned. Residents, if you would like, council, stick around for residents that may want to speak to you.